Okay, I'd like to call to order the special meeting of Glendale City Council for August the 9th. Can we have rule call, please? Mr. Kasakian.
Council members, Friedman.
Here.
Harpedian. Najarian.
Here.
Nanyan.
Here.
Here. For next item.
Agenda for the August 9th, 2016 special public meeting of the city council was postponed on Friday, August 5th, 2016, on the bulletin board outside city hall. Before use of public hearing, Director of Community Development regarding zone change, zoning map amendment, and precise plan of design at 2612 Honolulu Avenue, 2608 Honolulu Avenue, 2635 Sycamore Avenue, APNs 5611-012-003, 5611-012-014, and 5611-012-018. One A is a resolution adopting a negative declaration, and one B is an ordinance for introduction to amend zoning map, PZC 160157. See as a motion to approve the precise plan of design, PDR 1601574.
Thank you. This is an open, a public hearing, so I will open the public hearing. And, Mr. Choa.
Yes, ma'am. Staying with the policy arena of housing, now we have the consideration of a precise plan of design as it pertains to a rather unique property, double fronting on a major thoroughfare, albeit in a sensitive neighborhood, and what we have, we hope, is a developer with the very strong outreach skills in terms of bringing folks in to feel that they are part of a process, and the result is this PPD on Honolulu. So with that, we'll have our senior planner, Kristin Asp, give you a staff report.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Madam Mayor, Members of Council. This is a proposal for a precise plan of design to construct a two and three-story, 28-unit multifamily development on a 43,610 square foot site. The site consists of four total lots, two of which that front along Honolulu, one is a through lot, is Zone C2. The other two lots that front Sycamore are Zone R1, a single-family, by using a zone change for an overlay with a precise plan of design. So, what is a precise plan of design? It's basically an overlay zone, allows flexibility in zoning regulations while maintaining compliance with the general plan, it's tied to a specific set of development plans, a specific design, and six findings are needed to place precise plan of design on a site. This is the location. We have Honolulu, sort of at the diagonal at the top of the screen to the north, Sycamore Avenue to the south. You can see that there are four lots, Zone C2 and R1, and this is what the proposal to place the PPD designation on the site. This is an overlay zone of the existing site and surrounding uses. You can see in the colors, in the red, that is the zoning of the lot, with C2, and in yellow, the R1 portion of the lots. It's surrounded by a single-family to the south along Sycamore, a single-story auto body shop to the east, a one-story and three-story, one-story commercial office building, and a three-story senior apartment building along Honolulu. There's commercial uses, single and two-story, north on Honolulu. The site is currently a vacant restaurant, bar, and surface parking lot that would be demolished as part of this proposal. This is essentially the ground floor kind of site plan of the project. Essentially shows a, what would be considered a subterranean parking garage at the north side of the property, along Honolulu Avenue, but sort of becomes at-grade parking along the south side, Sycamore Avenue, because there is a grade differential going from north to south from Honolulu to Sycamore of over 10 feet. So the site slopes, essentially making the parking garage come out of the ground and be at ground level on Sycamore. Ground floor units are located on the west side of the property. This site plan shows a little more comprehensive feel of the project. It is 28 units that are broken up into four buildings and spread across the site. I should point out, access to the, to the site is only going to be off of Sycamore, vehicular access. There are pedestrian access points broken up in between the buildings at the north along Honolulu, as well as through this open terrace courtyard along Sycamore. As for elevations and the design of the project, it's a modern contemporary design, complementing the commercial character along Honolulu, which is seen in the lower elevation, that would be the two-story elevations fronting Honolulu. The elevations at the, at the top of the screen is the Sycamore side, which has a similar, similar feel, but has more traditional elements with craftsman influences to complement the single-family context to the south. You can see more elevations on the side as the design wraps both sides. The sections here, you can kind of see more clearly how along Honolulu to the right is higher than Sycamore to the left, and you can see that there's a, a use of terrace retaining walls to sort of screen and add landscaping to soften the, soften the elements of the project from Sycamore. More sections of the project, including the garden walls. And this is the landscape plan that shows a large landscape courtyard along Sycamore, ample landscaping with trees throughout the project that also helps soften the mass of the project from, from both Honolulu and Sycamore. So with the PPD, the overlay allows flexibility, zoning flexibility, to meet the challenges of this site, which has two different zoning designations, as well as the difference in topography. Again, the project has, project site has C2, which is a commercial zone, and R1, single-family zoning. The requested flexibility and zoning standards include residential density, floor area ratio, height, lot coverage setbacks, and landscaping. There's a detailed chart in your staff report and in the proposed ordinance that outlines the deviations from that. Also, so in addition to the findings outlined, outlined in the staff report and ordinance, staff feels that the, the project is appropriate to the site because the project is broken down into four separate structures, implies with the general plan and North Glendale Community Plan vision of Verdugo City by tailoring a design to respect the scale of the commercial, commercial and residential character of the neighborhood by minimizing the mass along Sycamore Avenue, which is a residential street, and having the larger mass of the building shifted onto Honolulu, which is a commercial street. We feel it's a superior quality because it demolishes a vacant restaurant and bar, replaces with a high-quality residential project composed of quality materials, appropriate site planning, mass and scale, design and detailing. Deviations from the zoning code are justified because of the topography and the dual zoning designations of the site, which would otherwise constrain development without using a PPD, and that the large side of the site is easily accommodated, easily accommodates a larger multifamily project. This proposal was reviewed by the Design Review Board and the Planning Commission on May 26th and July 20th, both recommending approval. Recommended conditions and considerations are attached to the motion. So staff recommends that the council adopt the resolution approving the negative declaration for the project, introduce the ordinance to amend the zoning map, amend the motion approving the precise plan of design as amended. I'm going to read a sentence, essentially adding that the effective date of this precise plan of design approval is contingent upon the adoption of the ordinance adopting the PPD overlay zone, and shall be the same as the effective date of said ordinance. And then further on August 16th, if it comes back, adopt the ordinance amending the zoning map. I'm available for any questions. I know the project applicant is, is in the audience as well, and they have a few things to say.
Thank you. Okay, questions before the speakers?
Just want to understand if I'm reading this correctly. The, the height on Honolulu is 25 feet, right?
I believe it's closer to 27.
Okay, not close enough. And also, can you briefly tell us what the conditions of the Design Review Board was?
The conditions of the Design Review Board?
That's a time where I want to probably do as well.
It's Exhibit B of the, of the motion attached in your packet, but there were five conditions and one consideration. One was to introduce additional seating and possibly other resident, resident amenities at the central courtyard, and at the upper portion of the south courtyard to make common spaces more usable. Two was to use permeable paving for at-grade hardscape, hardscape areas, or provide scoring pattern to direct water runoff to permeable areas. Submitted lighting plan and cut sheet details for staff to review prior to plan check submittal. Provide cross-section details for windows and surrounds. And five, specify the paving materials on a separate site plan or landscape plan, and the fencing materials and locations, and submit for staff review and approval prior to plan check submittal.
Got it. Okay, thank you.
Okay, so we'll hear from, I'll take the speaker cards before we have discussions, unless there are other questions from council at this point. Any questions?
So any motion would include the Design Review Board conditions, or will we have to make that a separate motion?
Yes, those conditions are included as part of the motion approving the precise plan of design. That's correct.
Mr. Kasakian, let's give the speakers three minutes. Is that enough for you, Mr. Simoni? Art Simoni is the first speaker.
Good afternoon, Honorable Mayor, council members, and staff. I could probably use a little more than three minutes.
Five minutes, and then the other speakers will give three minutes. Two minutes. Time.
Art, clicker is right there.
Wonderful, thank you. As staff gave you a brief description of the project, I'll maybe introduce you to the general context and go into a little more detail on some of the more pertinent items. But the more important item to point out on this slide is that it's a very irregular-shaped lot, and of course, half of it is Zone C2, half of it is Zone R1. Directly east of us is an auto body use, directly west of us is a commercial building, and just west of that is an existing three-story elderly housing project. And another aspect of the site, which is very unique, is there's a 14-foot grade difference from Honolulu over to Sycamore. And that, that is a big grade to kind of work around and to architecture designer project And so when we look at the aerial, we have a commercial street on Honolulu, and then we have a residential street on Sycamore. However, as indicated, oh, my, my pointer isn't quite hitting the screen well, but you have basically this building over here, which is the multifamily building to the west, and then the auto body to, to its right. And so when you look at a facade of Sycamore, this is an existing facade of the street. You notice the multifamily building to the left, that is the building that's adjacent to our property, it has a driveway off of Sycamore. You notice that there are large retaining walls that have turned the back of the project onto Sycamore, on, along Sycamore.
Give me a second.
Yes.
Let them know how, how to use the mouse so he can show.
Art, yeah.
Just use the mouse. There's a mouse that you can use.
Okay.
He'll reach if we not will. We have another. See if.
The laser pointer don't work on this.
That's what I tried, and I wasn't having much luck.
Cursor will.
Oh, that's right. With the time and everything.
Maybe because it's not a PowerPoint, it's in a...
While, while the slide is being worked out, you could kind of sense a general direction of, of, and a tech context that we're working off of. We have an auto body, we have the auto body on its right that's, that's turned its back onto the street. Again, this is the multifamily on the left, a close-up of it. This is a close-up of the auto body to our right, and as you could see, it has a very much of a commercial fortified edge to it along Sycamore. This is the commercial property to our west on, on Honolulu, and this is Jean's Auto Body directly to our east. I have studied all development options available for this site, and a residential project would really be the best fit. It'll nestle very nicely into the surrounding neighborhood. There's an existing surface lot that currently exists behind the restaurant that will be relocated to the subterranean level out of sight. We're only proposing 28 units on an acre of land. That's very low density. If we were to apply the R1250 standards to the 43,600 square foot property, we would end up with 43 units, and it would be a three-story, 43-unit project. However, what is being proposed is a two-story, 28-unit project. So instead of utilizing the PPD to push its height limits or push the density limits, what we're actually doing is the opposite. We're proposing two-thirds of the height, and we're proposing two-thirds of the density. Because of those factors is, is, is the reason we've had such great success with working and, and obtaining community support on this project. As for the specific of the entitlements, we propose to use, utilize the PPD overlay zone. The PPD was conceived for these type of special and unique circumstances. Variances in zone changes run with the land. The PPD is the opposite. It is very project-specific, and the project is approved, then the project has to be built as approved, and any changes would trigger one to go through the entire process again. As such, the PPD is extremely strict, and it does not allow for any deviations after project is approved. This project is an appropriate use of the PPD overlay zone. It does not fit into any kind of zoning, any other zoning category, and as such, the PPD was really conceived for these kind of scenarios. With all our project, we seek guidance and feedback early on, and, and this project is no different. We had overall five meetings with the community. At our first meeting, we met with some Montrose community members, we achieved a lot of guidance and feedback, which we used to kick off the project design process. We had a second meeting where we voluntarily mailed out notices to all the residences within 500 feet of the property. This was done voluntarily. We had a large meeting, there was a big turnout. Again, we got a lot of feedback and guidance that we used to further the design. The third meeting occurred in July of 2015, and we met with the Montrose Verdugo City Spar Heights Neighborhood Association. If I could have a few more minutes as well to just wrap up. And in that meeting, we got a lot of feedback and guidance. We proposed two different types of projects to the board at that point in time, and that's very important. We proposed a three-story project that would consist of three stories along the C2 portion of the site, of family homes on the R1, or we proposed a two-story multifamily project throughout the site. That is the scheme that the community chose to go with, and that is the scheme that we developed and ultimately had a fifth meeting where we, a fourth meeting, I'm sorry, where we shared the details of that project, and then ultimately the fifth meeting where we shared the project that you see today. So it's been a very long process, but it's a wonderful process in that we're able to achieve a lot of guidance, feedback, and collaboration. And we hope this will be a very good precedent for the design community and the development community, because it, it does say a lot in that these kind of collaborative meetings with the community does yield to win-win scenario. And so I'm available to go in as much specifics or details as you might imagine. My traffic consultant is here, and is also Tony from Meridian is here as well, that, that prepared the, the MND. And so with that, if you have any other questions, I'm available. If not, I'll conclude my brief presentation.
Thank you. We go on to the...
Quick question.
Do you want to ask him questions? Okay.
What are the unit sizes again?
We have 28 units, 20 of them are two bedrooms, eight of which are three-bedroom, and they range anywhere from about 1,300 square feet. The, the smallest one is 1140, and it goes all the way up to 1,700, which is the largest one.
Okay, thank you.
And these are condos?
These are condos, correct.
Or sale.
Or sale.
Ownership housing.
Ownership housing, correct.
Let's, let's hear from the public question I will ask.
Okay, thank you, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Mike Morgan, followed by Grant Michaels.
Madam Mayor, he said three minutes.
Let's do, is one minute enough where we're really?
About a minute, minute and a half at most.
Okay, so let's do two minutes.
Good afternoon, City Council, Madam Mayor, City, City Council, City Manager and Staff. My name is Michael Morgan, speaking as an individual, though I am on the board of the Montrose Verdugo City Spar Heights Neighborhood Association, the MVSNA, within whose boundaries this development will, will be constructed. I am here for the City Council to grant approval for the PPD and this project, a project that will be a great transition from Verdugo City to Montrose. Metro Investments have involved the community in every stage of this project. Metro Investments has conducted at least five meetings, as you already heard, within, with the residents, soliciting their input and modifying the project along the way from a three-story to a two-story development. So you can see the mountains, something that is very important where I live up in North Glendale. When did you ever see a developer scale down a project? He even had a public park, which I really championed at the very beginning, but the, the people on Sycamore just determined that they didn't want a public park, which has now been modified because of community input. I wish all the developers in Glendale would be as open as Metro Investments has been from the very beginning, so there would not be as many us-versus-them projects as there are now in Glendale. In conclusion, please approve this project and allow the zoning change to, to place a PPD overlay zone on the development that will benefit all of the community. And I'd like to also say, today's my birthday, so if you could give me a birthday present and, and approve this project, it would be a great birthday present for me. Thank you very much, and have a good day.
Happy birthday.
First of all, happy birthday, Mike, and second of all, we cannot let that prejudice us. I'm sorry. We're very fair, we're very fair. Okay, Grant Michaels.
Good afternoon, Mayor, council staff. I'm Grant Michaels, I'm the President of the Montrose Verdugo City Spar Heights Neighborhood Association. Normally, we come before a hearing body seeking compromise. I do need to commend Metro Investments for reaching out to us at the start of this project two years ago, and engaging us in outreach and hearing what we had to say about this project. This culminated in two community meetings that were open to our neighborhood and the public in general, where the feedback that was given at those meetings was incorporated into this design. The PPD in this case is appropriate, and we do support that because rather than looking for a way to expand or exceed the limits of zoning, this project is actually decreasing what could be built had we applied different standards. For us to be able to look at a two-story project across the entire lot versus looking at three stories in the commercial section, that was very appropriate, and we do support the PPD in that regard. Looking at the mitigated negative declaration, looking at the use of a bar and restaurant with very high evening traffic compared to residential, we do support the negative, the negative declaration in that regard. In short, we do support this project, and while we do acknowledge that there are those in the direct neighborhood that have specific objections, we do consider this project an appropriate compromise for the development, for the neighborhood, and for the city. Switching and speaking now as the President of the Homeowners Coordinating Council, I do want to encourage other developers to reach out to the community, to the neighborhood associations, other community groups, and engage those groups early on before project designs are set. It does help and did, in this case, benefit the project. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Bill Weisman.
Good afternoon, Mayor Divine, City Council members, city staff, and the public. My name is Bill Weisman from far north Glendale. I'm speaking today on behalf of the Crescent Valley Community Association, and I believe you've already received via email our letter of support for this project, so I'll try not to repeat some, some of the points I made in that letter. As Grant Michaels alluded to just a moment ago, normally those of us who are members of community associations and neighborhood associations, when we speak before the City Council, or the DRB, or the Planning Commission, it's usually because there's something nasty going on that we're, we're trying to prevent. And so it really is a great pleasure to be able to come up here today in support of a project that, as previous speakers have mentioned, is an appropriate compromise for residential development in our area, because our area is fairly built out, the development opportunities that do exist are infill development opportunities. And the Metro Investments project is one of two that are currently in the pipeline. There is also the additional, coincidentally, also a 28-unit project on Pennsylvania and the 210 freeway that the Ganges Company is using. And as we all know, based on your discussion of the last several hours, housing is one of the most critical and crucial issues that we are facing in the city of Glendale, not only affordable housing, but market rate housing in areas not necessarily concentrated in the downtown core. And as neighborhood association members, we are very appreciative to have the opportunity to be given several different options, to have the developers sit down with us and say, well, we can do this, or maybe we can do this, or, you know, maybe we can combine features of these different proposals into something that will be more acceptable. And through a process of iteration and community meetings, we were able to achieve that goal. And so I am here today to ask for your support in the approval of the precise plan of design, which is appropriate for this dual-zone property, and follow the staff recommendations for the negative declaration and approval. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, thank you. So I will open it to council and colleagues. Any comments?
Yeah, I'd like to ask the architect a couple of questions.
Mr. Simoni.
Good afternoon, Art Simoni.
Good afternoon, Mr. Simoni. I want to, because it says in here, I just want to make one, couple of clarifications. The two-story and three-story portion, that's why I asked the question in the beginning. On Honolulu side, it's a two-story one.
Correct.
And the only place that you have a kind of a three-story is on Sycamore side, which you have the garage and then two floors on top.
Correct.
That is being kind of, how can I put this in? It's being covered by, by a step-down landscape area.
Correct. We've utilized components of the North Glendale Community Plan, which calls for multiple retaining walls, instead of one big retaining wall. And as you've noticed, everything around the parking structure has two or three different layers of garden walls, which cascade up, and so as you're looking at the project from Sycamore, you're not going to notice a parking structure, you're going to see a waterfall of, of landscaping as depicted in the imagery and the landscape sheets.
And how do you, the Design Review Board conditions, you're okay with those, right?
Yes, I, since I'm on the Design Review Board, I had to abstain and leave the room, and so some of those conditions are actually inherently part of, already part of the project. Others, we absolutely will do, and so all the conditions are okay with, with the applicant.
Okay. And thank you for providing a material board, a color chart. The roof color, is this the correct roof color on the, on the material board?
It's the actual color as close as could be depicted and printed on paper, and it very closely matches the color elevations as well.
Okay, and the color of windows, what color are the windows?
The windows are going to be dark color, and so it's the anodized bronze color, and so the elevations are accurate in that as well.
Elevations are accurate, okay. I have one, one comment on the front elevation. I don't know if they can put that up or not. Just want to ask you if there is anything that you can do about it or not, everything else. The, the front elevation, which is the Honolulu side.
A6, architectural.
A6, yeah, A6.
Close, Art?
There it is.
The, the lower picture, the break between the roofs, everywhere else, the roofs kind of continued, or even if it's set, set back, they have a similar, similar roof. Not the one in the bottom, lower picture. The break between the roofs, is that, is, that's part of the design, or it's?
The, there was a clear decision made early on to break the two masses of the buildings in order to allow for view vistas to the mountains, and, and also to break up the mass so it doesn't seem like one large building. That was something that we worked out with staff as, as, as a, as a concept.
Okay.
So that's the intent of it.
So that's the intent of it.
Got it. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Any other questions for... And I'll close the public hearing, and we'll, thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Friedman?
I think the project's definitely an upgrade for the neighborhood. That old restaurant bar that was there was really an issue for the quality of life of the residents, and it's a blighted situation now. This will be a much less intense use than any kind of commercial, and it's a very nice design. The landscaping particularly is very elaborate and impressive. It's going to do a lot to soften the buildings and give a residential feel, which will be nice in this part of Honolulu. The apartment building that's next to it, even though it's an apartment building, it's really a monolithic, large building without any green, greening giving it any relief, and this does that very nicely. And whether it ends up being rental or ownership, it'll be great, but having ownership in there would, you know, will fit in very well, and those people will have a stake in the neighborhood and be great neighbors, I'm sure, for the R1 houses on the other side. So I absolutely support the zone change and the project. And I also want to commend the architect for working so well with the community and really hearing their concerns and addressing their concerns and making a lot of compromises in terms of what their ultimate profit will be, to make sure that they have something that's compatible with the neighborhood and that will add to, really add to the neighborhood, which I'm sure this will.
Thank you. Mr. Simoni?
Sure, I'll keep it short. Want to commend the developer for making it so easy for us. Again, to have a PPD of all things and for the neighborhood to come out and support it is remarkable. But that's a testament to the project that's being presented, which is a great addition to Montrose. It's good that we're still building. I mean, we're not building the huge projects that we're building downtown, but we're expanding our housing stock and therefore alleviating the problem of too much demand and the rising prices. So good design, very happy about it, and I'm going to support it.
Thank you. Mr. Najarian?
I do like the design. I think it's appropriate to approve the PPD due to the split zoning that we have. I'm happy that the neighborhood is in agreement due to the hard work in the outreach efforts. I'm glad that it's not too tall. The mix was troublesome, troublesome at best. I remember it was a hangout for a biker gang, and it ended up in a, not me. I left. I left before the gang arrived. There was a murder emanating from there on the 210 freeway. One biker shot another biker, and it's, I think it's going to bring, more importantly, it's going to bring homeownership to Glendale. And my big beef for a lot of the developments, both downtown and throughout the other regions, are that we're focusing solely on rental. This is an opportunity for families to come in. The units are fairly good-sized, for families to come in and build roots in the community and not exhibit the sort of transient occupancy that we are seeing in some of these other buildings. So that makes me the most happy, is that it's condominium, and it's going to be ownership. And I definitely will vote yes for this.
Councilmember Garpadian?
Thank you. First, I'd like to congratulate the applicant, Mr. Simoni, and say that there is a first time for everything. And I would encourage you to take a picture with Mr. Weisman, Mr. Morgan, and Mr. Michaels and put it on news press, because this doesn't happen very often. So, and about an hour ago, I said everything for a hard way for this council. I stand corrected. This made it very easy on this council, because of the, this is a great example of community outreach and even a better example of PPD, because PPD is in the books, it's been there for many years, and is to help projects like this. And we, I just want to acknowledge that we received a few letters that they were concerned about the parking and traffic. Just want to mention that this project has 67 parking spaces for 28 units, which is, to me, is kind of overparked, but that's the code. By code, it's required to have that many parking spaces, and the project is providing that parking spaces. And I like the fact that, especially on Honolulu, this is not really a tall three-story building. It's very humble. And the mass is broken in different blocks, as you indicated, throughout the project. So the air and light and the view is there for the neighborhood to appreciate and enjoy. It's a ownership housing, and this is what I've been talking about. I always support projects like this that provides more ownership housing for families as well. So when our children grow up and they want, we will build enough housing in this town for our children to stay in Glendale and Montrose and La Carcena and live with us. So with that, I'm in support of the project as well.
Okay, thank you, thank you. Well, there doesn't leave much more for me to say. I agree with everything my colleagues have said. I received nothing but positive emails on this project, so that has to be a testament to the fact that you did far-reaching and numerous outreach to the community. And you said it was a good precedent, and I agree with you. I hope that other developers are watching and that they learn from this. It's, you know, we've gone how many hours making a decision, and now we've done this one in 15 minutes. So that's a testament to, thank you, Mr. Simoni. I feel it does meet the intent of the North Verdugo, I mean, the North Glendale Plan. You know, I'm not a big fan of the PPDs, but I feel that this one meets all of the criteria. It's, I would approve this. I have one comment, though. One of the considerations from the DRB was for you to do away with that circular walkway in the front, and I think that's really nice, because I can see some of the residents just kind of walking around that and not, you know, having it completely green. So that's my only disagreement. So I'm going to move to approve the project as well. So we'll take, I think that pretty much says it all.
Do we have to take any one motion or two?
I think we have to take three. Yes, yes. I'll move the item.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmembers Friedman?
Yes.
Garpadian?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Simoni?
Yes.
Yes, yes. And then the ordinance for introduction.
Introduce it.
Okay, that is done. And the resolution adopting the negative deck, we need to have a motion on that, the resolution.
So move?
Second.
And the vote? Roll call?
Councilmember Friedman?
Yes.
Garpadian?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Simoni?
Yes.
By way of clarification, the motion that you moved was as amended with the additional information to make it effective concurrently with the effective date of the ordinance. That's for approval of the design.
Okay.
Yes, that was the motion.
That was the motion, thank you. That was the motion, thank you. Next item?
Next item is just a motion for adjournment.
Move to adjourn?
Okay.
Roll session.
Let's, we'll...